Councilmember Singleton?
Yeah.
Payne, here.
Champion?
Yeah.
Cruz?
Present.
Powers?
Here. Uh, did you please read the public comments? Oh, wait a minute. All session, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The City Council is in closed session this evening on two items. Conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, and there's no action to report on either item.
Thank you, Steve. Now, public comments, Liz. Okay. Where am I at? Oh. Jeez. Sorry. Boy. Tom Page. Okay, we'll have the silent prayer and then the flag salute by Boy Scout Troops 119. So, all right, please. Hello.
Hold our, very close colors. Please join in the President's allegiance. Join in the allegiance.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold our close colors. Hold our retreat. Thank you.
And that was Boy Scout Troops 119. Thank you, guys. All right, now the videotape, please, Liz.
This meeting of the Gulf City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetro cable dot TV this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.c i dot galt dot c a dot u s. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Liz. Council, any agenda approvals, additions, and/or deletions?
I'd like to call E5.
I was wondering if we could move, but we got three appointments. If we could move those up after the presentation.
Yeah, I think we have, Liz, you want to move that all up, all five?
Yeah, I think all five of the appointments, well, the four appointments and the certification committee presentation, we could move all of those up.
Okay, so we're going to move them up to right after consent, right? Right after consent?
Do not, sorry.
Is that right?
Right after consent, okay.
No, I was just, okay. Sorry to say everybody's, okay, sorry. Okay, now we're ready for some presentations. The mosquito abatement report by the General Manager, Gary Goodman. Welcome, Gary.
Oh, thank you very much. It's a wonderful opportunity to come and talk to the council. First of all, my name is Gary Goodman. I'm the new manager of Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Insect Control District. As the council probably knows, David Brown, who was with the district for over 32 years, retired at the end of December. The council gave him a wonderful resolution wishing him good well, and he's doing well in retirement, although he seems to be, he says he's busier now than he ever was when he was actually working. So, I worked as the assistant manager for the last 10 years with the district, and then so then just got promoted to manager, and I wanted to kind of formally introduce myself so you had a new face. Most people are used to seeing David, so the manager just got a little bit taller and redder hair, so.
(laughing).
But, uh, our district was formed in 1946. We cover both Sacramento and Yolo County. We have an office in Elk Grove, which is our main branch, and we also have a satellite office in Woodland, to where we cover mosquito and vector control for both Sacramento and Yolo counties. We have a number of different departments to try to do that. The first part is public education, coming out to events like this, trying to reach out to the public to make sure that people are aware of what our services are and how they can try to prevent breeding mosquitoes in their backyard and contracting the disease. We will also be at the upcoming Galt Strawberry Festival to try to do outreach there, so we do a number of fairs and events, school programs, trying to get the word out about how to protect yourself and make sure that you're not breeding mosquitoes or transmitting disease. Second portion of that is our surveillance program. Throughout the district, we set out a number of different traps to collect mosquitoes. Our technicians set those traps and then pick them up, bring them back to the lab, separate them by sex and species. As the council probably knows, only female mosquitoes bite, and so then we take those female mosquitoes and we test them to see if they're carrying virus. Specifically, the one that we're concerned about at this moment in time is West Nile virus. We've had it here in California since '04. It emerged in the United States in New York in 1999, and so in five years steadily made its way across the country, and we've had it here now for 10 years. It's not going away. It will be endemic here to the area for quite some time because we have the right types of mosquitoes and the right types of reservoir birds, the crows and magpies that really carry the virus. So, the mosquito transmits the virus, picks up the virus from the bird, and then transmits it either to another bird or to a human. And so, our goal is to try to prevent that. So, we want to try to get a baseline as to what issues or what the surveillance numbers are telling us in terms of abundance and/or virus activity. So, once we kind of identify that we may have virus in a particular area, we have control technicians that go out, they look for breeding water or standing water that may be breeding mosquitoes. Some of those sites are very easy to see, especially down here in south part of the county, a lot of ranches, a lot of pastures flooding, those types of things are very easy to spot for our technicians. But, once you get into the urban areas, it becomes a little bit more difficult. You can't quite see in everyone's backyard, so backyard swimming pools that are being unmaintained are still a big issue for us. Last year, we visited over 7,000 pools within the Sacramento and Yolo areas, and so we still rely on the public to make sure that they call us and let us know. I know a couple houses down, maybe it's foreclosed, or it's vacant, or it's got a green pool, and then we go out, try to be out there the next day to take care of the problem. Most of our, at least within the swimming pools, we actually plant mosquito fish. We have 24 ponds at our facility. We plant over 4,000 pounds of mosquito fish a year. We're probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country, very proud of that aspect, and so that's another portion of our control. If we do detect virus, we do, can do truck mounted spray units in the evening or put an airplane up. Luckily, actually, for Galt, we tend not to get a whole lot of virus activity, so I think those folks that are maintaining water in their backyards, dipping over their buckets and/or they've got the flower pots that may collect water, Galt must do an excellent job of making sure that they're going around their yards on a weekly basis dumping those things out. We have detected virus here in the past, but we've always been able to take care of it pretty, it's always been localized, so our trucks have been able to, for the most part, maintain it, and we rarely have human cases from this particular area. So, that's a good thing. We definitely appreciate the help, and we're very active in this particular community. So, one message I wanted to try to get out is what we anticipate for this upcoming season. We have a drought year, and while the recent rains have definitely filled up some containers that we're maybe finding out in the field, what happens typically in a drought type of season is the water tends to congregate, so wherever there water, there is water, that's where you're going to have now mosquitoes and birds interacting. So, typically, what happens in drought years is that virus activity actually intensifies. It's much more localized and focused, but we do tend to have higher virus activity in areas in years when we have droughts, and so that's a concern for us moving forward, and part of our mission is to try to make sure that people are aware of what they can do to try to prevent mosquito breeding and/or protecting themselves from contracting West Nile virus. And so, one of our big messages is making sure you're going into your backyard dumping over any standing water. If you are being bothered by mosquitoes, make sure that you're putting on a good repellent and/or wearing long sleeves. I know sometimes that's difficult in the summer months here in the Sacramento Valley because it's very warm in the evening times, but I guarantee if you don't get bit by a mosquito, you can't contract the disease, so that's a good thing. And then calling the district. If you see, if you have a problem with mosquitoes or you have an issue, give the district a call. We want to come out. It's already paid for essentially with tax dollars. We get funded by property taxes. We're typically out within 24 hours to try to take care of the problem, and we communicate exactly what it is that we're doing and how we're doing it. So, those are essentially the messages I want to try to convey to the council and to the public, and also then to introduce myself as the new manager of the district. Any questions?
Council, questions? Well, congratulations on your new position.
Thank you very much.
And it was very nice meeting you, and thank you for...
Yes, very much. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, now, public works, water conservation presentation.
Before we turn it over to Steve, let me just say just a few words. Normally, we try to keep our presentations to about 10 minutes. I think a month or two ago, Councilmember Cruz asked for a workshop on water conservation issues with the drought that was going on, and so I've given Steve special dispensation to have a little bit more of an in-depth presentation and discussion with the council and the community because of the important nature of the topic and the fact that you can't do really a water conservation drought discussion or conversation in 10 minutes. So, I've given him a little bit of leeway to do a little bit longer than...
Okay, how much of a leeway? Just...
(laughing). He has his glasses now, so.
Steve?
How much of a leeway, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I promise to keep it to less than an hour and a half, and my goal is to be done in less than 15 minutes and then entertain your questions thereafter, and we'll try to make it brief. I think you will find informative. I've tried to take some complex issues and information and make it somewhat user-friendly and non-technical to the extent that we can, and we've got our PowerPoint on. We do have some photos today, so we might want to give them some front lights if we can. Thank you. We are here to talk about water conservation and maybe a little bit about the state and city's water system, and a little bit about some future options and directions that we have some thoughts about, and would be very interested in council's direction as to their interest. And so, we're reading a lot of newspapers. These are all headlines from local papers in the last six months and photos that you might have seen on TV or in the news. Folsom Lake on the right and the now well-known emergency declaration that followed up with government, the governor's executive orders to do what we call a 2020 program, to reduce by 20% by the year 2020 as a mandate throughout the state and on public agencies, including cities and counties. So, with all of those drought headlines, virtually all of those headlines are getting to the news because of our surface water storage, and this is a pictorial of the various state reservoirs and the various conditions. The, probably the percentages as to how full we are, you want to look at the red percentages on the right under each box, and the red line is what is typical of this time, this was printed out as of yesterday, and so the red line is where we normally would be on average, and the lower right-hand red number is the percent of that typical value. So, most of the reservoirs in the state are between 40% and some of the more fortunate ones are up near 75% of normal for this time of year. You'll notice that, interestingly, that the two fullest reservoirs in the state are way down in the south desert, south of the Tetraples, so they've been pumping a lot of our northern California water down to make sure they're ready for the drought, but that has left some of our reservoirs lacking. So, let's talk about Galt's water supply and our water supply system. We are 100% fully dependent on groundwater for our domestic needs. We do reclaim some 700 acre feet at the wastewater treatment plant, which is reused, beneficially reused, for agricultural irrigation on property owned or adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, and, but our drinking water and all of our potable water throughout the city are coming from eight active wells that, when they're all working, they're capable of producing over 10,000 gallons per minute, and if they were to operate 24/7, all eight of them, all day long, they could produce over 15 million gallons a day. And that sounds pretty impressive, but we've got four of those eight wells that are currently out of service. One of your items will be on consent tonight, another item is on discussion, and we will be hearing more about both of those, but they have to do with these four wells that are out of service. So, we're actually reduced down at this moment to 7.8 million. That's just over half of our normal capacity, and the problem is, it's April and the summer's coming, and so we're, the other two agenda items are how do we get these wells back online and what's it going to take? Our peak day demand is projected from our peak month, looking back over the last five years, is 10.6 million gallons, and that's more than we can produce today. A good thing we're not in June or July, is all I've got to say. However, helping us out with that, we do have 9 million gallons of storage, almost a full day's storage, so if we have a failure of a pump or we have electrical problem or a power outage, we do have some reserves and generators that we can operate the city in an emergency for at least a day. Assuming we get some of those wells operational, we'd be recharging as we're pulling water out of our storage tanks. With those eight wells are six water treatment plants primarily treating for arsenic, iron, and manganese to meet primary and secondary standards for state drinking water. Well, where does all that water come from? In Sacramento County, the three primary basins, we've locally sort of adopted nomenclature of the North Basin, that would be north of the Consumnis River. The Central Basin, which is, I'm sorry, north of the American River. The Central Basin, which is between the American River and the Consumnis, sort of the Elk Grove eccentric area in South Sacramento, and then the South Basin, and as you can see, Galt lies in the very sort of southwest tip of that South Basin. Well, we've been doing some research. We work with a consortium of other South County water agencies to collaborate on the health of our aquifers, and studies have been done of historic groundwater table data throughout the county from state records as well as local records, and as you can see, 30 years ago, those sort of circular bullseye patterns that, in each of the basins, there are cones of depression, we call that. That's where groundwater table is depressed due to water use, pumping, has drawn out, and that's sort of the low point. The, these are contour lines, equal elevation contours. That's not depth of the groundwater. That is, if you took a slice through the earth at minus 40 feet from sea level and minus 20 feet and so on, you would get these different contour elevations. As you go to the east up into the foothills, the ground rises, the water table also rises. You can actually, you can see the eastern part of the county there, you can get up to over 100 feet above sea level. Well, that's the gradient that pushes groundwater infiltration from the foothills and the rivers and the snowpack down into our subsurface aquifers so that we can pull it out down here in the valley, and so that's a good thing. That gradient is coming towards Galt. So, that was about 30 years ago. This is what it looked like 30 years later in the spring of 2000. That was about, actually, 40 years ago, and 10 years ago, we took another look at the data, and the northerly two basins are fairly similar. Water moves around over time, but I would call your attention to, again, the Galt-centric area, and on the right is where it was 40 years ago, and on the left is where it was 10 years ago, and I would call to your attention, I don't have a laser pointer tonight, but that on the left, you'll notice that that circle, that bullseye, has moved east of Galt. If Galt were the culprit here that was overpumping aquifer, it would have gotten deeper and stayed focused on Galt. The fact that the cone of depression is pulling away from Galt means that other users are creating the demand that's taking it away. So, how does that work? Well, this is the land use within that South Basin that we're in, as Galt, and as you can see, only 5% of the land area is considered to be in urban land use. Virtually all the rest is some form of agriculture, and so the demand, so let's take that in terms of actual groundwater use. Again, you can see Galt with 3.4%, this picture snapshot in time was several years ago, and we projected that we were, our urban area is about 3.4% if you add in the rural residential and the unincorporated county, you get back up to around 6%. That profile was pretty well with the urban area from the previous slide. As you can see, by far, irrigated agriculture is the huge demand on our South Basin aquifer and along with other forms of agriculture. Well, what is that doing over time? And this, these are some, I apologize, this is a real cluttered graph. It's a technical report that I was able to pull this out of, and if, you can actually see the orange lines are going to some dots that are a little hard to read. Those are well sites, four of them scattered throughout our South Basin, some just north of the Deer Creek area up there, and some are down closer to northeast of Galt, and these are, over time, and I realize you can't read the fine print on the graph, but the thing to look at here is, these are data points, spring and fall readings. Wherever you see a gap in the jagged graph, there's a data point missing. Somebody, the well wasn't available, or they couldn't get a reading on the well, so there's just missing data points, is why there's some gaps in those. But, the trend is, from upper left on all four of these, is some 50 years ago, when we started picking up records, that there has been a decline. It goes down in the fall after the summer, goes up in the spring after some recharge, and that sawtooth pattern has continued to show that the groundwater levels have dropped about 50 feet, give or take, depending on which well you look at. But, more importantly, if you look at the last 10 years, if you were sort of to draw a line of best fit between the sawtooth, you'll notice that it's flattened considerably in the last 10 years. It is not continuing to draw down. We believe that that's an indication that we are not in a dramatic or urgent situation with the aquifer. It is stabilizing as the hole or the cone of depression to groundwater, he reaches a certain level, that increases the gradient from the recharge zone. The water flows in a little faster, you actually reach an equilibrium. If it was dramatically overdrafted, those curves would continue down and get deeper and deeper and deeper until the city's wells would begin to cavitate and suck air and quit producing. So, the good news is, we think that trend has leveled out to some extent over the last decade. We've seen that in four different wells, so we think that that's probably cautiously reliable information. We'll keep an eye on this. We're due, this is about four-year-old data, we're due to take a look and update on that. I didn't have unfortunately time to research. We do have data on our wells that are collected at least annually, so we haven't seen any dramatic in that trend, and we changed that to report tonight. So, let's look at the city's water usage. Within Galt, these are a rainbow of months, if you please. Those are the 12 months. We took a five-year average of our total water production from our wells and broke it up into monthly slices, and so these are average monthly amounts. As you can see, even in the lowest month of the year, we're producing almost 80 million gallons a month, and that's in January. If you look at our peak demand, we're up at a quarter of a billion gallons a month in the summer months. Our historic peak month was up over almost 270,000, 270 million gallons. They're big numbers because we deal in gallons, not in acre feet, but it's still an awful lot of water. So, we also broke that down into average daily. We took sort of that monthly, divided it by 30, and you can see on any given day, you know, even in the low months, we're producing almost 3 million gallons in the dead of winter and up over 8 million gallons a day. And the right two bands are, again, what our projected historic peak day and that month that we produced 10.6 million gallons is up there, and that's in one day. That's projected peak demand. Again, with four wells out of service, the green bar to the right showing that we could not meet that demand, and if you project to the left, based on our average summer months, we cannot even meet the July and August demands on average, much less if we have a peak year. So, it is important that we get those, at least a number of those four wells back online in the next couple of months before the June temperature rise and irrigation increases. We've also looked at the categories of water usage in the city, and you can kind of see the pieces of the pie. By far, commercial is the big user, but we have some plants like Cardinal Glass and Air Products and others that use a lot of water in their processes. So, commercial and industrial are the big piece. But, about a quarter of our water does go to residential uses, and would note that we have a slice of the pie that is unmetered water. That's our flat rate customers, and you will note if you look at the numbers that compared to our residential users, that on a per property basis, that the flat rate customers are using about 33% more water per connection than our metered customers are, and that's an important part of moving forward with our MIR project this summer, is to get a bit accountability. Those who are using the water should be paying for the water and give us an ability to know if we move further into an extended drought where we can target water savings. And with that, I'm going to turn the mic briefly over to our new community development director, and Tony's going to talk a bit about what we're doing with new building requirements and with retrofitting.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Just real quickly, a couple of slides here for you. We'll first of all talk about the SC 407, which was put into effect back in 2009, and what it did in '09 was it basically called for water savings for existing developments, both residential and commercial. And originally, it was to require that by the beginning of this year, that all building alterations or improvements done to single-family, multi-family, or commercial development would trigger that fixtures and the structures to be replaced with new, even further water-saving devices. Due to the, well, first of all, before I get into that real quick, by 2017, all non-compliant plumbing fixtures period in any single-family residence would need to be retrofitted with the new fixtures, and then by 2019, all non-compliant fixtures in multi-family and commercial buildings would need to be replaced. So, due to a little backlash because of the fact that, you know, the cost of putting in new fixtures at this time would be cost prohibitive for a lot of permits, and therefore there would be, you know, the fact that things were done unpermitted, the California Building Official did determine a list of examples that were not considered alterations or improvements, and therefore it gave a little bit of leeway for the time being with regard to retrofitting existing structures. And this over here on the right side is an example of a handout that we're going to, that we just created and we're going to be handing out with the building permits to let applicants know what the requirements are, what examples of activities are not considered to be alterations or improvements and therefore not triggers replacing toilets, fixtures, showerheads, et cetera. And there on the bottom, it gives you an example of what the existing requirements are and what the new requirements are, and there are quite a bit of drop. For instance, your showerheads will go from a 2.5 down to 2 gallons per minute flow and whatnot. With regard to new construction, the Cal Green Code requires a 20% reduction in water usage for new construction, and primarily, again, that is to mandate that new structures have the lowest-flow fixtures installed at the time of construction, and also that any automatic irrigation systems now be weather-based as opposed to just set by yourself before. So, that is something that we are required to pursue with regard to building permits at this point for new construction from here on out.
So, that's a good segue, and we're almost done with looking at how do we save water in existing homes? And a new home built in 2010 under the old code before the Cal Green updates that Tony was just referring to, they anticipate that you could see what the big users are, by far, outdoor landscaping, outdoor... By far, outdoor landscaping, outdoor uses is over half of even a then-new home. On the right, they've tried to compare the, sort of the typical usage they would expect in the older code and an additional 20 percent reduction with these new Cal Green requirements on all new construction. And as we begin to see retrofit requirements with remodels and potentially be talking about possibly some rebate options and other things to encourage replacement of older fixtures, then we could take the older homes that came in that are much less efficient, certainly than the new homes built in 2010, and see if we could bring those. And if earlier it sounded like that the flat rate customers were just wantonly wasting water, well, they're at a distinct disadvantage. They're in older areas of town, they have older plumbing, they have older fixtures, they don't have the new, typically new low-flow toilets and low-flow showers and low-flow appliances and low-flow faucets. So, a part of what we think is that if we do an integrated approach to meter, we can see what they're using and recognize and see where the peak uses are, and maybe we couple that with funding for some rebate programs along with any remodeling permit requirements that we can move towards this 20 percent reduction that is part of the governor's requirement. So, let's talk about what some of those options might be. I cannot stress strongly enough, and I'll probably get an amen from Mr. Clarkson in the audience here, is if we could achieve a 20 percent savings over our current baseline, that would defer millions of dollars in electricity costs, chemical costs, new well construction, water treatment plant construction. 10 percent would save us millions, 20 percent would save us multiple millions of dollars over the next decade in not having to build new wells, just if we could save it. And then if you add a reclamation component, we'll talk about in a minute, you could even defer even longer, and cost deferred our money in our pocket today without having to raise rates on our customers. So, public outreach is our first and obvious tool. We don't want to come out with a stick. We want to come out with tools and options and helpful suggestions. We believe that with the new water meters going in, that we could, if drought were to continue and worsen, right now, we really don't have a draconian drought ordinance like many cities do with a stage one through stage four or whatever. We basically have a year-round, don't waste water, use water-saving devices on the ends of hoses. But we can enact more strict requirements, and we'd come back to council if this were to become an extended drought, as some of the headlines predicted in my first or second slide. Yeah, is this going to be an extended mega drought that'll lasting a decade or more? We would have to start looking at some of those more stringent requirements. But one of the tools that many agencies are using, I think has been presented by my predecessor, are tiered water rates as part of the new rate regimen going forward, where those who are using minimal amounts of water are rewarded, and those who are using excessive amounts of water, large families, multifamily units, if that causes to have to build new infrastructure and incur more cost, then perhaps they should be paid more for that use of water for, over those who are conserving. So, that's an option that's available to us. That perhaps, that could be used as a funding source for rebate, those who are using the water, could help fund others to conserve water, sort of an offset there, and that could be a funding source if we wanted to issue rebates for people that would retrofit older homes with energy-saving toilets, excuse me, water-saving toilets, faucets, appliances such as washing machines. Those are things that could be complementary to each other. And certainly, we want to take a hard look at water reuse. We do currently, again, reuse about 700 acre-feet a year in agricultural irrigation that we divert from our wastewater and some of our final treatment processes. That's a good use of water, but there are also some great ideas that we could get into as more of a long-term approach, and that's perhaps retrofitting parks and landscaping with smart controllers that can sense moisture conditions, rather than being on a fixed schedule every other day or whatever it might be. How about if we water when we need to water? Or how about if we don't water on the days when it's overcast or raining? So, those controllers exist. I think part of the requirements in the fine print of AB 407, 507, that actually require new construction to do that for residential as well as commercial going forward. I think that the city should be a leader and a good steward. There's a cost investment to do that. We can also look at our city buildings. We've got a lot of older buildings ourselves. We've got some old toilets that tend to run long flushes and do things. We can look at our faucets, and I think there's room for the city to set an example in low-flow fixtures. An integrated approach, I think, is the key to being flexible and adaptive, that is, looking at, are there stormwater reuse opportunities? Those are usually expensive. Capturing rainwater in barrels doesn't necessarily help us water parks, but if it helps with recharge, if that can be, you know, spread to individual properties for their use, we would certainly open those ideas as a ways to capture the storm system and put it to beneficial use. Again, those are typically capital-y-expensive projects, but I think there's probably no bad ideas when you brainstorm, and whenever a drop of water counts in the extended drought, suddenly things that were thought to be expensive suddenly look attractive when it's that or don't have any water to irrigate your parks with. So, I think we want to be open-minded and take a look at those, and we bring back some ideas and some thoughts at future council meetings as we develop our capital improvement programs about what that could look like. And certainly, we want to optimize use of reclaimed water from our wastewater treatment plant. We're spending millions and millions of dollars and more millions in the near future to upgrade our treatment plant to produce drinking water quality effluent. And it seems a shame to let that go down the creek. And we can use it today, meet standards for reuse in, you know, landscaping and parks and things like that. So, again, you've got to find a way to get it from the treatment plant to those facilities, but between some options like put the plant being up on the north end of town, as Eastview develops, and they're going to have a large green belt, perhaps there's a partnership there that could be worked out where they need water, we have water, they've got to mitigate their impacts on the groundwater. There might just be a partnership there that would make it work for all parties. And I think it's those kinds of collaborative and creative approaches that will help us face future drought conditions. And with that, we would entertain any questions, and would certainly welcome input from council if any of those shorter-long-term options just really sound interesting, or heavens know, we don't want to go there. We would certainly welcome that feedback.
Councilmember Payne?
I wanted to ask Mr. Stewart, it seems like getting hot water to shower, sometimes you have to run it for quite a while before you get the hot water. Do we waste a lot of water that way? Is there anything in the building code that's going to maybe require that we have the water here closer to the sources as opposed to house garage and bathroom on the other side of the house?
I'm not sure about the building code requirements about the location. Yes, we certainly do waste quite a bit of water. I experienced that myself. One of the ways to get around that is to have a tankless water heater, whereas it's basically instant-on hot water all the time, and so you don't have to worry about running the water until it warms up.
But you don't find that in most new homes in subdivisions. It provides as part of the package. Is it something that the owner adds later?
Often, it is something that the owner adds later, yes. But again, as we go through and, you know, see the need to do the retrofit, I think we'll be seeing those more and more installed.
Would it say that in water? When you get on meters, would you think cost-effective?
Well, I'll turn the meter question over to Steve. But again, when you do have instant-on hot water, obviously, you're not wasting the gallons waiting for it to warm up because the water is direct. You just turn on the faucet and you can deal with that. So, you'd say quite a bit of water that way.
And if I may embellish on that briefly, it's a mixed blessing. There's pros and cons. To do instant hot water, you would need units near each sink, and that gets redundant and expensive. The other problem is, the trade-off is, you may save water, but you're now using energy to recirculate. It's typically circulation, it's typically the way it's done, so that there's always hot water there, but now you're going to heat that water continuously. So, there's sort of a two-edged sword there. You can save water, but cost you more in energy. So, I guess it's sort of which way the pendulum is swinging as to is water the crisis or is energy the crisis in any given period of time? But there's no perfect solution. The best solution I've seen is that's cost-effective, is insulate the pipes all the way from the hot water here to each faucet, the hot water side, so that you don't do so much in the walls and from that.
Thank you. Council, any other questions?
Outstanding presentation, Steve. More than expected, thank you.
I have one.
Chair.
If I may, thank you. Mr. Winkler, you stated about the aquifer level has, in the cone depressions have leveled out, right? And is it true, is it not true that during the drought, obviously, surface waters are effective almost immediately, but the aquifer itself usually don't see, if the drought continues, don't see a change usually for a year later or so?
That's correct. Mr. Singleton, there's a lag. The water that we're drawing today was probably, started out in Snowpack or up in Sierra streams and lakes five, six years ago. So, it takes a while to work those 80 miles down into our aquifer through the pores in the ground. And so, similarly, there's a lag in drawdown. That's, the good news is, we have a buffer. We're not immediately affected by Folsom Lakes level, as some of the Sierra communities are. But an extended drought will have an impact. That water has to recharge from somewhere. Most of our water from the merton formation that we're pulling out of, unless we get into our two deep-well proposals, are coming from water that is about five years past. And if we cut that off and wait five years, then we're going to work back.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember?
You brought up a valid point. On the deep wells, where is that aquifer? It's not at the same level as what we're currently using.
I'll look to Mr. Clarkson to correct me if I get too far afield here. The typical depth, I believe, where our wells are set will be somewhere in the 300-500 depth level. Our deep wells are more like 1,000 to 1,200 feet. We only have one, and it's out of service at the moment, and is subject to further council action tonight, among others. We have a proposal for a second deep well on cost. As soon as we can find somebody who's willing to help us finance that, hopefully, we'll see that in the council lifespan of some of those sitting at the diocese here. I'd like to deliver that project in a year term.
But where's the water come from? That's what I'm getting across.
It is an older formation. I've got a report here that gives us the name of it, but it is more of a geologically older water. You go even deeper yet, you get into ancient marine saline water that you hear about down in Stockton, where the cone of depression and that saline water is coming in. That's a bad thing. We're not, we're sort of drawing from in-between the normal layers that recharge rather quickly, and this, these are probably, I don't have a scientific answer, but I'm guessing this water might be 100 to 200-year-old water versus thousands of year-old water even deeper.
But it takes longer to recharge, is what you're telling me.
Yes, and therefore, it may not be a, an extended, long-term, you know, 100-year option, because is it recharging at the same level as the surface waters are, or is it just stored there? The good news is, we've got the only well that's tapping that, at least in the South Basin, and so we kind of are enjoying that exclusivity at the moment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campagn?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. It was a good presentation, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Winkler. Okay, public comments, please.
Under Government Code, Section 5495, 4.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Rick Walters?
My name is Rick Walters. I'm going to talk a little bit about Walker Park. But before I do first, before I do, I wanted to say that on the water-saving measures and the water meters, in 2008, I started to get the city to go forward with these things, and here it is, 2014. So, with that, I'll go on to Walker Park. Walker Park has two retention basins, and it's filled up, not all the time, but some of the time. About two months ago, I had to call the police department. There were two young kids that were waiting in the retention pond, and they seemed to be only about five or six years old, with no parent supervision. They were just out there by themselves. So, the city is opening itself up to litigation if one of those kids die out there as a result of drowning. Now, a year ago, I told the city manager about this, and I don't know what happened. Whether it went in one ear or out the other, I don't know. But this needs to be taken care of. Now, the second issue is, behind my property, Buz's Walker Park, seems like it's a racetrack. Motorcycles are going up and down the field there all the time. There's no fences. You don't have anything fenced off. It's just wide-open range. Anybody and everybody can come in. So, that needs to be taken care of. The third thing is that when your people go out and spray for weeds out there, the prevailing wind is from west to east. So, when he's down, six feet down, which there is a drop down, when he uses the spray, it goes up and comes through the cracks of the fence, which in turn kills part of the leaves on the trees and everything else that people have there. So, he needs to be instructed the proper way to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, now, we're at the information and consent calendar. Barbara, would you like to start with number five, the approval of additional funding for the 2013 wealth rehabilitation project?
Okay. We're not talking about a co-op money, $16,000 for the SC above the contingency that has always already been included. I just wonder if we feel pretty confident that that will take care of it?
Yes. Councilmember Payne, as you note, we are repairing three wells. We went in and we asked you for a little latitude on a larger-than-usual contingency, but we're kind of opening three black boxes until you pull the well and call them out at a hole 3, 4 hundred feet down, and you don't know what you're going to find. And the first two wells that are mentioned in the staff report, Golden Heights and Gateway, fairly normal, expected, certainly well within our contingency to repair those two. However, the third well, River Oaks, which is actually the newest of the three, we did find some more extensive damage, both to the motor housing up on top, as well as to the screens deep in the well where the water actually comes in from the aquifer. And that well in and of itself will cost more than the other two together, a total of $60,000. And so, we are going to need some additional funding, and we would, are recommending a $48,000 increase, which will leave us with a slight contingency if anything else comes up between now and completion. And we would propose to, I'm sorry, $60,000 is what we're requesting, and we need that extra $48,000. This would leave a small contingency for any completion of about $12,000. The money is available in our other water-operating funds, or is recommended that we be authorized, city manager be authorized to do it from the operating budget to the capital improvement budget, which requires council approval. We've already given authorization for spending within the contingency, and so if we can increase the contingency by that same amount, then we can issue the final change order. And as you heard earlier, we're kind of got one arm tied behind our back to do those three wells. We are going to look into the third well. Some of that damage should not be found in a well that's that newer age, and we're going to look into whether perhaps the original contractor, even their 10-year late defect period, might be able to make a claim back against that. But you're right, since those issues could take quite a bit of time, we recommend we get the well online for the summer, and then we go further down.
You suppose after you look into the original...
Okay, I thought she was here. Never mind. Okay, the second one we have is the commission on aging. At this time, we have one letter of interest, although there are two vacancies. The letter of interest is from Sherry, who I know is here. And so, I would ask Vice Mayor Singleton or Councilmember Cruz to look at an appointment or give staff further direction.
So, we're looking for just the one seat right now, correct?
There's only one letter of interest, although you both have vacancies.
Okay, I'm going to message Darcho to the agent committee, please.
Sherry, you want to stand up? Just wave down.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, next, we have the youth committee. At this time, we have two vacancies on the youth committee. The appointments are for Vice Mayor Singleton and Councilmember Payne. We also have two letters of interest from Haley Hansen and Faith Harper, who, Ms. Harper's in the audience. Haley was not able to attend. So, at this time, I would ask Vice Mayor Singleton and Councilmember Payne for further direction or for an appointment.
Shall I go first?
Ladies first.
I'm happy to appoint Faith Harper. She was at our last youth meeting, and I think she'll be a very good mentor for the youth committee. She is in the audience. She would like to stand up.
Thank you. Thank you again for volunteering.
So, I thought, when I got these, there was only one, but we had two then.
We did add a.
Awesome. Then, the next would be my choice, Ms. Hansen, then?
Do you want to make that appointment?
I wouldn't like to make that appointment, please.
Okay, and she, I know she's not here.
No, she's not here.
Next, we have a vacancy on the planning commission because of a resignation. This is Councilmember Campion's appointment. We do have one letter of interest, so at this time, I would look for an appointment or further direction. Ms. Hewer is here in the audience. That's who the letter of interest is from.
And I'd be more than happy to have her back on the planning commission.
Okay, you want to stand up, Laurie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay, a woman with some knowledge on the planning committee. Commission, that's going to be great. Congratulations, Laurie.
Okay, you want me to go into the next slide?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, the beautification committee review of plans for Harvey Park. And Janine St. Clair's here. She's going to make a presentation to council, and you also have some information in your pack.
Does everyone have a copy of, I think it's a copy of the plan, document, et cetera, in your pocket? My name's Janine St. Clair, and I'm a member of the beautification committee. When we saw the plans for the concept of Harvey Park renovation, we noticed that the northeast corner was not being addressed, and that's probably one of the most prominent corners of the four, because it borders Third Street and C Street. So, we decided that we would take that corner upon ourselves as our beautification project. With the cooperation of, excuse me, Bill Forrest, city engineer, and Aiden Selby in Public Works, we were able to come up with a plan that would meet their approval for maintenance, et cetera, and have a minimum impact on the existing sprinkler system. If you look at the plan, in the center adjacent to the flagpole path are future benches. And at the park and recreation commission meeting last week, Brandon Moore, a teacher at Estrelita High School, offered to make the benches as part of a class project. The signage originally was going to be provided by the city under the park's main Harvey Park project, but due to the funds being cut, apparently, that may not happen through them. But here again, it may happen through the working class at Estrelita. Basically, the plan just indicates a pathway that cuts that corner diagonally and provides seating adjacent to the flagpole with some additional planting. The second sheet is the cost estimate, and currently, the beautification committee has approximately two thousand dollars in their budget, and this will come up to a total of nineteen hundred and twelve dollars and change. The one item that may change would be the lunch. That's sort of still up in the air as to the quantity of people. There'll be three different days where we have volunteers on site, so we feel there'll be three luncheons. The last two pages are the work schedules, and as you can see, starting off with Public Works Department is going to modify the sprinklers. Then Saturday, May 3rd, we will be removing the sod and the small plants. Third Street will be our staging area, so Public Works is providing us with cones or sawhorses to block off the parking area on Third. Then Friday, May 9th, we have a volunteer with a tractor that's going to dig the pathway. And then Friday, that's right, Saturday, May 10th, is when the big push is, and that'll be an all-day job, moving all the rock for the pathways, putting in the landscape fabric, bend the boards, and planting. Then, May 12th through the 18th, here again, Public Works is partnering with us in the fact that they're removing all the debris, and they are also providing all the base rock for the project. June 9th through 13th, after school is out, we will be getting mulch from Smud's site in El Grove. So, with all the cooperation that we've had between the school, Public Works, and at last night's meeting of the Lions Committee, they've also included the Lions Club and the youth committee, it made the whole project very, very feasible. So, we are asking for your approval to proceed. As you can tell, we're sort of ready to go.
Wow.
Do you have any questions?
No, but I want to tell you that I'm really impressed. I'm very impressed. I think that's wonderful that you have gotten such a big collaboration with so many people in the city. And I drive by there all the time, so I'm looking forward to seeing it. And I think you picked a great place and a great place to start off.
It'll be nice to have a sign.
It will be really nice.
Indicate we're, this is it, folks. I appreciate your time and consideration, and let us know if it can be approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add one more thing. I would like to give you the two hundred and fifty dollars. I'd like to donate that on my discretionary funds when we can, to help you either with the luncheon or with any way you'd like to use it.
Can you come up, Janine? Come on up. Sorry. Need to get you on record.
I thank you very much, and we reduce that towards the food, and any remaining cost of that, would we be able to put back into our budget?
Yes, you will.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Back to, okay, now, we're at the city attorney's office. Now, that's a resolution calling an election to ask voters whether office of the city clerk shall be appointed by the city council. That's to you, Steve.
Okay, and I think actually Liz is going to start off on that.
I'm going to start it, and then she'll finish it. We change it up all the time. Before you tonight is a resolution calling for an election to ask the voters whether the part-time elected city clerk shall be appointed by the city council. As everyone knows, currently, there is a part-time elected clerk, as well as a full-time city clerk administrator who reports to the city council. The only qualifications in state law for an elected clerk is being eighteen years of age, a Galt resident, a registered voter in the city of Galt, and not having been convicted of certain disqualifying crimes. In contrast, the job qualifications for an appointed city clerk would normally include educational and experienced requirements. According to the League of California Cities, back in 2009, 146 out of the 482 cities had elected city clerks, mostly part-time, and today, 132 cities are elected. I think this trend emphasizes that cities are recognizing the need for professionally and technically trained certified clerks who are accountable to city officials. In eliminating the elected city clerk, there would also be cost savings to the city twofold. The first, by not holding an election for the part-time position, and second, a savings on the money spent for health benefits. Health benefits alone may be sufficient to attract unqualified people to run for office. Over the last decade, since the position was originally established as a part-time elected position, the law and nature of the position has become very specialized and professionalized, such that it requires an individual to obtain their certified municipal clerk designation, or better yet, their master municipal clerk certification. Today, the city clerk performs critical tasks, such as preparing meeting minutes, maintaining the official city records, maintaining the Galt municipal code, overseeing conflict of interest filings, administering the elections, just to name a few. They also ensure that municipalities comply with federal, local, and state laws, including the California Open Meeting Act and the Public Records Act. By putting this measure on the ballot and hopefully making the position appointed by the city council, the city could ensure that individuals undertaking these duties have the appropriate qualifications, as opposed to simply running a successful campaign. And at this point, there's some legal issues that go along with this, so I'd like to turn it over to our city attorney.
Mayor, councilmembers, I just wanted to point out that in the government code, there is a provision that says that at any municipal election, the city council can put a question to the voters whether any of the elected offices become an appointed position by the city council. The government code states that as it relates to the city clerk, that the question that would be put before the voters is, shall the office of city clerk be appointed? And so, that precise language does appear in the resolution tonight. And then, the government code goes on to say that if the majority of the votes cast on this measure are in favor, then after the current elected city clerk completes her term, that at that point in time, the city council would appoint the new city clerk to fill that position. If the city council approves the resolution, that's before you this evening, the next step in the process would be for me to prepare an impartial analysis of this measure by the third week in June. There would then be a deadline for parties to provide letters in support or against. That would appear, there's a hierarchy, but a sample of those letters would appear in the ballot, and then this measure would go before the voters on November 4th. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
I have no questions. I have a comment. I think it's a great idea, you know. I'm kind of wondering why we're not doing that for the treasurer, too. I mean, is there any like to also? Because it would really help if people have working knowledge of finances, but they're going to be the treasurer.
Yeah, that's kind of a question, because this, the way the measure is written, it just simply asks if it's to be appointed. It doesn't address the issue of qualifications, as Liz was mentioning, in terms of being a C M C or M C, M N C, excuse me, master city clerk. So, I guess, is it prohibitive to put what the minimum qualifications are as a ballot measure?
It actually, it wouldn't, I don't know if it would be prohibitive. If you do put it in the ballot, you know, measure, then you're, and the voters approve it. For example, let's say you say, you know, shall the city clerk be appointed and hold a particular certification? Then, there's no opportunity to change that qualification in the future without going to the voters. And so, my recommendation would be that we just put the simple question of an appointment to the voters, and then the city council, in consultation with the H R administrator, could gather information as to what kind of qualifications other cities require for their city clerk, and then adopt the job classification similar to our other positions in the city. And then, as it relates to your other question on the treasurer, that is a position that, and a question that the city council could put to the voters if you so desired. I think the reason that, at least tonight, we focused on the city clerk is because Liz has indicated that when she gets to the end of her current term in 2016, it's not her desire to run for reelection. And so, this is really our opportunity to put it to the voters, because if we wait to 2016, then what happens is somebody does in fact run for office, and if they get elected and the measure passes, then you really don't make an appointment for another four years, because somebody's just been elected. And we don't have, as far as I know, we don't have the identical situation with the city treasurer position at this point in time. But it is an option for the council if you so desire to consider.
Councilmember?
I'm just going to move to the other resolution.
Have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Before we move on, following up on that discussion, I don't think we should have, I think, some discussion should occur with the current city treasurer before we move forward with that. You know, not that I'm opposed to it, I don't know. I don't know what Sean's long-term plans are, or plans are, period. But I think we should at least have the same level of discussion that Liz is enjoying regarding that, so.
We'll make contact later. Okay, or as the Public Works delegation of authority to city management terminates contract rights to proceed with Golden Heights Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project Phase Three. Steve? Winkler?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, we are forwarding a recommendation to you tonight, that after careful thought and a long process, we are recommending that you adopt a resolution delegating authority to the city- And so this is really our opportunity to put it to the voters, because if we wait to 2016, then what happens is somebody does in fact run for office, and if they get elected and the measure passes, then you really don't make an appointment for another four years because somebody's just been elected. And we don't have, as far as I know, we don't have the identical situation with the city treasurer position at this point in time. But it is an option for the council if you so desire to consider.
Council members.
I'm just going to move to the other resolution.
Have a second.
Sorry.
Okay, call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Champion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Before we move on, following up on that discussion, I don't think we should have, I think, some discussion should occur with the current city treasurer before we move forward with that. You know, not that I'm opposed to it, I don't know. I don't know what Sean's long-term plans are, or plans are, period. But I think we should at least have the same level of discussion that Liz is enjoying regarding that. That's all.
We'll make contact later.
Okay, or as the Public Works delegation of authority to city manager, terminate contract rights to proceed with Golden Heights Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project Phase Three. Steve?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Council members, we are forwarding a recommendation to you tonight that after careful thought and a long process, we are recommending that you adopt a resolution delegating authority to the city manager to terminate the right of our current contractor, Mountain Cascade Incorporated, to proceed with further improvements at the Golden Heights Water Treatment Plan Expansion Project Phase Three. When I came to the city over a year and a half ago, this project was experiencing problems. We've worked diligently to try to rectify those problems and have issued multiple requests for completion and requests of direction to the contractor to cause timely completion. It is costing the city money, and more importantly, it's threatening our ability to bring that well and water treatment plan online, affects three of our wells. As you heard briefly earlier tonight, those are critical to meeting our peak summer demand, and there have just been a series of problems. And given that we've made little substantive progress in a year and a half, we feel that it's incumbent to recommend that we take actions to cause completion of this. The contractors repeatedly failed to meet promised deadlines and to complete things that are necessary to correct deficiencies on the project, and it is beginning to threaten the health and welfare of our city residents. So with some hesitancy, we're recommending we take this precedent step outlined in our recommendation.
Any questions or comments, council? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Champion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, now the capital improvement program status update, January 1st, 2014 to March 30th, 2014. Again, to you, Mr. Winkler.
I'm thinking we're getting near the end of my siege tonight. We're happy to present a third quarter update on kind of what we're doing with our various capital projects. We did not complete any projects in the third quarter, so this is unchanged. We've completed four in the current fiscal year. The reason we haven't completed anymore is if you look at the four that are currently under contract, they're all large, long-term contracts. We'd hope by next quarter to be able to report on the completion of several large projects. Most importantly, to us being substantive progress on our Twin Cities widening, we're getting real close to having that done by then. We do have nine other projects that are in the Cristville of environmental design and final, and we're actually going to be pulling out the bid of several of those in the next few months, so it's going to be a busy summer, of course.
Never a dull moment, Doc.
And we do have attached sort of a schedule to show you where we're at in the life of these many projects. And next month, you'll get an additional year outlook to kind of see where those completion times are going to be.
What's your counsel?
Got your hands full.
Okay. So we're just receiving that. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to adjourn the Galt City Council and convene to the Galt Successor Agency. Roll call, please.
Board members, Singleton?
Here.
Payne? Here. Champion?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
We have no public comments, right?
I have no speaker sheet.
Okay, information and consent agenda, would you read it, please, Liz?
Yes, we have two items. The first, approval of the minutes of the meeting of April 1st, 2014, and the second, approval of the successor agency warrant.
Move the items.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Board members, Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Champion?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
We're going to adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council. We'll pass you, Liz, because we do have a few announcements about upcoming meetings, correct?
I do. Here. Thank you. Let's see, on April 17th, there's a beautification committee meeting at 3:30 in the City Hall Community Room. On April 23rd, a Measure R committee meeting at 6:00 PM in the Pachetti Room at the Galt Police Department. On April 24th, a Commission on Aging meeting at 5:15 at the Parks and Rec Building. Our credit and chance E-Ways event will be held on Saturday, April 26th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the Galt Market Ground. It's free to Galt, City of Galt residents. And let's see, May 5th, a city council youth committee meeting at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. That takes us to our next council meeting. I think I got everything. Thank you very much. And one more reminder, just start planning Public Safety Day on May 31st, 9:00 to 2:00 at the community park.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, comments, points, staff. Anyone to my left, anyone to my right?
I have one over there hiding.
You're looking down and hiding, like, don't pick me.
He's having his chance for the day.
Mr. Bemmer, is your microphone on?
Thank you. Vice Mayor. The council might remember, we launched Galt Connect, our local app for mobile phones and internet and so forth, giving residents an opportunity to submit comments, concerns, streetlights, service requests, et cetera. And it's been very well received. We've had about, I think, 20 requests submitted just in the two weeks that we've had it launched. So a variety of different things, graffiti, potholes, code enforcement, you name it, a variety of different things. I think people are really engaging in that, and our staff has done a great job being responsive, following up. The great thing is when you submit a request, send your email saying, okay, the city got your request, and we respond saying, okay, here's what we're going to do about it. And just all the way through the process, there's communication between the city and the residents, so we keep them informed about what's going on. So just keep spreading the word. We've got it on our website, and I know it was in the papers and so forth, so hopefully the effort will continue, but it's really been a success so far.
Great, actually 21, because I just got one.
21, huh?
Just got one tonight. Bing! Actually, I've got one, too. Chief, anything? Steve?
Council members, I'll start with you.
I thought I saw him. I thought I saw him go up.
I haven't had a chance to hear that. I wonder if I could get a word in edgewise real quick here.
Yeah.
Just a couple of quick updates. As you know, we did close Twin Cities Road this Sunday night, and so there's some rather lengthy detours. But we do appreciate, the public is doing well, all things considered. We are working on adjusting some timing at the Amador-Lincoln intersection because we're queuing a lot of detour traffic up there during the day. We also had an unrelated problem on A Street with a traffic loop, and hopefully by the end of the week, that's going to be corrected. And lastly, I was thrilled with the volunteer talking about Harvey Park. And a lot of times, you get people coming in and saying, why don't you do this for us, why don't you do this for us? And we are just thrilled, I think, speaking on behalf of other city staff, when they come and say, what can we do to help and how can we part? And I think that's a great example of how city resources can be leveraged with community groups and others to do a great project. And on that note, not in Liz's list of activities, but coming up, and I'm drawing a blank, is it next Saturday or two weeks, the Love Galt Event, fighting two weeks, two weeks after now, Saturday, we invite people to come out, I think we did a hot dog lunch to come and volunteer, and we've got about 100 trees to plant, fences to paint, and lots of hard work to be done. So that's a great opportunity to come and give back to the community and encourage the public and those listening by way of the internet to join us.
Do you work in conjunction with the churches? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, we have three churches that are leading, but anybody can come volunteer.
Well, yeah.
We've got lots of work, and we'll provide all the materials.
I do want to make one little comment about your detour. Since the cars go right in front of my office all day and all night, and boy, do I have fun trying to leave and get home. So I guess we'll put up with it for a month.
You're all week. Take the bus.
Glad you brought it up, Steve. Anyone else over here? Council, Kirk, Champion? Councilwoman Cruz?
Well, we'll jump into it. Last Saturday, we had the Extravaganza. It was a huge success, happened against many people as we had the year before. Heard nothing but compliments about what occurred. The kids loved the egg hunt. We got a little nervous there for a while. We weren't sure we were running a ladder truck, but they showed up last minute, just in time. Our firemen out there from the ladder company, they did a beautiful job in helping out with that, and both the egg hunt and the egg drop. And thank you, Chief Hanson, for the use of your people and your equipment.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Oh. Yeah, I do want to actually put Chief Hanson on the hot seat again. Well, because she's here for a lot of our meetings, and I got to thank her, because I attended the Fire Ops, was it Fire Ops 101, is that what it's called? Okay. And she actually escorted me around for a few hours, introduced me to folks, and what they did was they had a lot of television there, a lot of government authority there in their turnout, which are the fireman outfits, and even the vice chairman for Laffco that sits with me, Mr. McCarty was there, and dressed out and going in these buildings and smoke, and, I mean, they had oxygen tanks on, I mean, they were in for it. And Chief Hanson actually asked me, are you going to dress up? And I said, no, I can't, I got a meeting later on today, which happened to be a Laffco meeting, so... But then I saw Mr. McCarty, and I thought, oh, I want to get garbage because I didn't do any turn down, so... But I still smelled like smoke, and I think he was fine. He didn't smell like smoke really too much unless I was just smelling it. But thank you so much for showing me around that, and I appreciate you being here when you're here with our meetings. It's really appreciated. Again, the Extravaganza, I attended that, and we were judges for the, what are they called, the bonnet? The bonnets?
That's a float, is the word.
Yeah. Bath kits.
Bath kit float.
And as I've said before, and I'll say it again, you know, I just love watching those kids, you know? It's the innocence of those kids, smiles, it's just wonderful to see them just interacting with one another, just having fun. They're just being kids, I love seeing that. And then I also attended the art show, it was Friday, it was last Friday, at the corner of Lincoln and C. I thought it was very nice. We have some talented kids around town, I'm telling you. We just got some really talented kids. Oh, and Al left. There was a bus there of, I had a shaven gentleman, so Al made me lean down to take a picture because he was trying to say it looked like me. I just hope it doesn't get publicized.
You never can tell.
With a gold hair in the back here. That's all I had. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Payne?
Well, I just have to point out that both projects, the Extravaganza and the Hardy exhibit, were sponsored by the Shop Local Committee as well as the City of Galt. I think that community is really accomplishing some good things for our community. You mentioned earlier, the art exhibit, I have to brag on it, it was so classy. Not only did we have great art and sculpture, even bald-headed sculpture, but we had acoustical guitar music, live music in the background. It's a very nice exhibit. The art students from both Liberty Ranch and Galt High School were really proud to have the opportunity to show off some of their talents. And I was proud that we have these talented young people in our community. Extravaganza went over well. There were moments when we wondered if it was going to work, mostly the egg drop, if we were going to be jumping off the building with our eggs or something. But it all turned out really well. We had a huge turnout, looking forward to next year. The other thing I would mention is I went to the Parks and Rec Commission, I believe it's on Wednesday, and really asked their permission and informed them of our idea of creating a community garden at Harvey Park. The main reason I went there is because our parks, our master park plan called for a huge top lot to go there at some point in the future. We don't have the funds to do it right away, don't know when we can, so in the meantime, it's just a vacant lot. But Parks and Rec approved the whole idea, they think it's great. In fact, one of the members is going to actually be helping us with the design and building the benches and some of the things to go there. So I was pleased that they thought it was a really good project.
Well, I think that there's a lot of great things happening in Galt. The community is coming together for a lot of things, and that's exciting. I had a great time at that art exhibit, too. I could not believe how talented those kids are. I was blown away at how awesome that stuff was. It was great. And it was a beautiful day Saturday, too, for the Extravaganza, and it was just, let's keep that up and keep it going, get the town involved in a lot of things, and I think it's just looking great. So on that happy note, I'll... We're going to the meeting.